I'd like to welcome everyone, everyone to the Alexandria County Board of Commissioners regular scheduled meeting for December the 4th. We're going to ask Commissioner Ronnie Reese to give her invocation and Vice Chairman Josh Lott to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I understand. I pray. Before we come to the scene, end of this day, thank you for all the blessings given to us each day. Thank you for each person that's come out. Pray you give them a safe journey back to their homes, be with those that protect us each day and all our law enforcement, emergency services, fire department, highway patrol and sheriff's department, police department, be with all of them. Help us to not give us wisdom and make wise decisions and move Alexandria County forward in everything that we do. All these things we're asking of you. Amen.
Please join me in facing the flag.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any commissioners that would like to give a report this evening? I'd like to say that we had a great turnout in the town of Taylorsville from the citizens in regards to the Christmas parade. I saw a lot of families smiling at their kids running around picking up candy and watching all the different things going on and I think families had a, and folks that attended had a great time and we were blessed enough for the weather to hold off just long enough, I believe. Anyone else? Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, right hand? Anonymous, motion carries. Anybody sign up for public comment? Okay. At this time, we'll go into Erica Brown, Audit Partner with Martin Starnes to deliver our 2023 audit presentation. If you would, adjust that microphone wherever you need it.
Is that good? Well, good evening. As you said, my name's Erica Brown. I'm an audit partner at Martin Starnes and Associates and I'm going to present to you some information about fiscal year 2023 audit. And I just wanted to start by, you know, thanking the commissioners and everybody for allowing us to continue as your auditor. We truly value the relationship we have with the county and look forward to future. We issued an unmodified audit opinion, which in layman's terms means that we found no material misstatements that led us to believe the financial statements would be misleading to the reader. And as always, I'd like to thank Jennifer, Linda and all the finance staff. They're always very well prepared, makes our job easier. We work well together and that just makes things go a lot smoother. I also wanted to thank the DSS staff. Our compliance requirements and the things that were required to audit has increased significantly over the years. We audited six major programs this year and that just is a lot. It's a big undertaking, not only for the auditor, but also those preparing for it. So we appreciate that. And as far as things changing, I just briefly wanted to talk about the Government Accounting Standards Board and the increased complexity in reporting standards. Shane and I, we were talking earlier and he had pulled up the audit report from 10 years ago and how many pages did you say it was?
94 pages.
And how many pages is it this year?
144 pages.
In the past, so there's a lot of new standards we have to implement, a lot of more information we have to audit and put in the report and whether it's all useful or not is up to, I guess, the reader to decide, but a lot more work has gone into it. So, you know, there's only been two years since 1985 that there was no GASB statements issued and the present statements have been issued, 40% of them, just over the past 10 years. Along with all the complex federal funding and compliance requirements just really increases that workload. For fiscal year 2023, the new standard that was implemented was called GASB 96 and that's related to subscription-based technology arrangements and it's just the way that those are reported. So that was something that was implemented this year. Now, the majority of the presentation is on the general fund and then we'll switch over to some of your enterprise funds, but this shows you a big picture of your revenues for the general fund. So 46% related to property taxes, about 29% related to local option sales tax and followed by number three, which is your restricted intergovernmental revenues, those are your federal and state revenues. Those make up 12%. So your ad valorem sales taxes between 2022 and 2023 increased about 3.5%. Local option sales tax, that increased about $1 million or 8.2% and that was mainly due to Articles 39, 40 and 44. And then moving on to the top expenditures, so the four largest expenditures for the county are public safety at 33%, human services at 25%, general government 18, and education at 16%. So if we look at a little more detail of the expenditures, this shows you public safety. This includes the sheriff's office, detention center, fire protection, emergency communications, inspections and emergency medical. This increased about 14%, almost 15% and that was mainly due to a 5% COLA for the budget year that was budgeted and an increased focus on competitive compensation. Human services, this includes your health department, DSS and senior center. This increased about 12% and again, this was also due to increase in COLA and salaries. And education, education increased about 3.8%. So that's comparable to the prior year and this does include current expenses for county board of education and CVCC expenditures. And your general government, that increased about 15%. This was due again towards the increased focus on competitive compensation as well as additional information technology expenditures. Now if we move forward and look at the general fund debt a little bit, the principal payments and interest paid, you can see up here on the general fund debt was a little over $1 million. And the public safety debt that's listed up there that has a balance of 1.9, close to 2 million, that will be paid off in fiscal year 2026. When I was preparing for this presentation, I thought, well, how could we pay that much in principal payments and only have close to 2 million left? And the reason for that is because within those principal payments at the top, the million dollars, that includes lease and subscription liabilities that we've had to put on the books as long-term debt that weren't there before. What's included, the majority of that in fiscal year 23 was $325,000 in lease and subscription payments is included in that million. So we can get more detail on that, but just to make that slide a little bit clear. And as far as when those will expire, you know, leases typically have three, five-year terms, they all vary, so depending on when they renew, but the majority of those will renew or expire by 2026. And then moving forward, just to talk a little bit about fund balance, so fund balance is terminology you hear very often and this is a measure of the county's financial resources available. It's taking your assets and deferred outflows minus your liabilities and deferred inflows and that gives you your fund balance or your net position. That net position is then broken down into five categories. First one is non-spendable, that would be something like inventory or prepaid. Then restricted, these are items that are restricted by outside sources such as law or grantors that restrict that money that hasn't been spent. And then you have committed and assigned, which are similar. One takes board action to undo, the other does not. And what is left over is your unassigned, which is no external or internal constraints. So your available fund balance, this is defined by the local government commission and is calculated by taking your total fund balance, less the non-spendable, which would be prepaid or inventory, less your stabilization by state statute and that is by law not available. It's basically your receivables and that gives you your available fund balance. And that number percentage-wise or dollar amount is something that you'll hear talked about a lot, so I just wanted to explain that definition. So the audit results for 2023, there was an increase in close to 700,000 in general fund, available fund balance and the available fund balance percentage is 41 point, about 0.6% of your general fund expenditures and transfer out. And the increase here was due to increase overall in fund balance. And this just gives you a little bit more detail showing that calculation, your total fund balance and backing out the non-spendable and state statute. So you can see here the available fund balance for 23 versus 22 and that increase. So up until now, we've talked mainly about the general fund. I'm just going to go over briefly some of your enterprise funds. This shows your solid waste fund overview. So your cash from operations at about 132,000 and your budgetary net income of $246,000. There was an increase, now this only includes revenues and expenditures, so it wouldn't include depreciation or things like that, which is why it says budgetary net income. There was a slight increase in cash from operations as well as an increase in budgetary net income for the solid waste fund. Now the water funds, you have Bethlehem water and you have the county water and sewer. So you can see cash from operations in both of those as well as the budgetary net income. There was a slight decrease for Bethlehem water and cash from operations, it was about 2%. And there was an increase in cash from operations in the county water and sewer fund for the current year. And then this shows you, your enterprise funds are a little, are different from your governmental funds, so we talked about fund balance, whereas with your enterprise funds, you have net position. This is basically your working capital. So your total net position, less your net investment in capital assets, which is your assets less the debt that you own them, gives you your unrestricted net position for those two inner water funds. And then similar to the slide on the general fund, just gives you a big picture of your outstanding debt as of 6/30/2023, the principal amounts that were paid in interest in the current year and both of those funds, the current debt will be, is scheduled to be paid off in 2041. And the last thing I have is good news. There's no general performance indicators and what that is, is we now have to submit with your audit to the local government commission. It's called a data input worksheet where we take all the information from the audit and put it in the worksheet and that helps the commission to get statistics, to look at percentages, to track trends. And if there's things such as deficit fund balance, significant audit findings, you know, just general performance indicators that would lead one to think, we need to look into this and make sure that we're heading in the right direction. So any negative performance indicators we're required to talk about and you had no negative performance indicators. There was no financial statement report findings and no compliance findings, which is really something to be proud of. Your staff works really hard to make sure that things are done right, so we really appreciate that. Lastly, just to conclude, I've said a lot of information, said a lot of, you know, a lot of information has been given out, but if you look in the front of the audit report, I'm not sure if you have a copy now or you'll get one, the front has, it's called management discussion and analysis, I believe there's a tab for it. And that is a great place to look, that will give you an overview of what happened in those 144 pages, of what happened in the current year, why things increased, why they decreased, the plan for the fiscal year 24 budget and so on. So I always, you're not going to read that report from front to back, but that management discussion and analysis is a great section to look at. And then the other report you have is the compliance report, which is a much smaller book. I don't know if you have that with you or not, but that goes over the compliance with the federal and state awards, what programs that we audited and lists all the federal and state expenditures that the county had for the current year.
Erica, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
How many other counties are you involved in on audit reports?
As a firm-wide, I think we have about 24-ish was my guess.
How do, in your, in your mind, how do we stack up on those in the ratios and numbers you see throughout our report compared to other counties?
That's a question I get very often and that's something that Jennifer or Shane or even myself, if we can follow up with you on, it depends on population, it depends on funding, it depends on where you're at in your plan. We have some that may have a very, a lower fund balance percentage, but that's because they had a capital plan to spend money, whereas others might be very high because they're trying to build those reserves. So it's kind of a difficult question to answer, but those statistics are out there and we can get them for you based on population size. You can look at other counties that have similar enterprise fund operations to get that information.
So to simplify, your findings are we have a clean slate?
Correct.
Sweet. It all really won't.
I could have just said that and been done at the beginning.
We're in great financial shape but extremely low debt, extremely low debt. So we've done very well.
Yes.
Yeah, good report, I like to hear that and, you know, we're making pretty good progress. I know there's few of us that's been on here when things weren't that great.
They weren't.
To come this far, it's took a lot of work from everybody and I appreciate all the staff and everybody working on it, our county manager, he's doing a great job.
I'll say weren't or wasn't or whichever, weren't that great is saying it very nicely.
When I came on, it was 3%. So that tells you where, when y'all came on, it was 11%. We got it up to 11% and now we're at 41% and it's taken a lot of work, a lot of doing without, a lot of sacrifices of everybody. So proud of the staff, proud of our taxpayers and our community and the things that everybody's done to make this, this county very financially stable.
And we've got a good group of employees too and I'm proud of our county employees, all of them, you know, do a good job every day and show up to work.
Do it without them, right?
Yeah, that's right. I don't want to have to go out and do it all, so, you know, and Josh don't either, I think, so.
And as an informational point for everyone, there is a, there is a kind of minimum percentage of fund balance to prevent the state of North Carolina coming in and taking over your county. And Mr. Yoder, Commissioner Yoder mentioned 5%. That's there to tell you, to tell you where, where we were as a county, let's see, 12 years ago or so, 12, 14 years ago?
Been 18 years ago because you guys came on.
It's been nine, I know nine years ago is when I came on the board. And we were at about 10, 11% and that wasn't, that was, that had increased from.
And that's where those performance indicators come from. It takes a lot more, you know, a lot more information and there's a lot more performance indicators that they look at, but as far as that fund, they're looking, you know, for patterns and, you know, making sure that there's enough. So, and as far as you said, it's about 41.6%, I think is your available fund balance percentage and that represents about five to six months' worth of expenses. So just another piece of information.
Thank you for the good report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll call on Pamela Bowman to give us our cost of community services study from soil and water conservation.
I need the microphone low too. All right, thank you for having me tonight. This is actually a grant that we are applying for with the Soil and Water Conservation District. The Board of Supervisors and the Farmland Preservation Board has encouraged us to apply for it. It's a, like the title says, it's the cost of community services study. Basically, it's a snapshot of the different land uses of the county. So that would be your industrial, residential, agricultural, to see a cost versus revenue of each type of land use. So this is something that is beneficial to us as we work with agriculture to help show the importance of agriculture and, but also it's going to be helpful information for many departments and the entire county. So basically bringing it to you guys to let you know it's something we're going to apply for, but it would be a reimbursement program. So it would be something the county would pay for if we receive it and get paid back. It is basically a study that we would have an outside group do to determine how much we're getting back from those land uses as far as their tax base, but also what services we're offering for them. So how much it's costing the county for those land uses. So part of the application, it does require a letter of support from either the county manager or the county commissioners, so that's why I'm bringing it to you today. It's something that is due December 18th, but the awards are not given out till the fall, so it's kind of a long process, but if, if you all approve it, we'll go ahead and move forward with it. And it is something that if we were awarded the grant, but for some reason it didn't work out as far as finding the entity to do it for the right price or what we had, then we could, you know, give it back. We wouldn't have to do it. And this is, this is a first step in developing a farmland protection plan and that's something that I've talked with Brian about, that's something, Brian Burgess, our planning director, and he has that in the comprehensive plan, the draft. So just wanted to bring that before you, it's up to $17,000 and the, I don't think I mentioned this and I do want to mention, it does require a match. However, it is 30% and it can be in-kind. So that could be our office, Soil and Water, doing the admin work and so we definitely will do that. We will do in-kind services and so it shouldn't be any extra costs to the county. Does anybody have any questions about that?
I do.
Yes.
So it could be up to 17,000.
Yes.
With up to a 30% match.
Yes.
Depending if you do in-house?
Well, we, we do want to have it done outside, so, so the folks that could do that were NC State, Mount Olive, possibly Western Piedmont Council of Governments. So the 5100 would be the 30%. That would be on top of the 17,000. So that would be our assistance, basically. And some of that money, the 17,000 includes things as far as outreach after the plan is done and workshops for landowners and things like that. So any of that stuff could be done in-house and could be our match.
And you mentioned the county would be reimbursed for what portion?
The 17,000.
The 17,000.
Yes, yes.
Just a quick question, have we ever done this before or is this the first time?
Not that I know of, no. And there are lots of counties across the state that have done, or a few, that have done this 15 years ago or so. There's not many that have done it recently, so that's something that we've heard about in the farmland protection plan, that's something that we've considered in the past. The state right now, they're, they're saying this is a good thing to do, yes, you should do it, but they don't have all the answers as far as who can do it or who will do it right now and how much it's going to cost. So that's the, some of the unknowns, but that's why I say if we, if we get it and then it doesn't work out for our timing or the amounts, I guess the quotes we get, then we don't have to follow through with it.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Bowman, one question is, this is just a general question, is the, the information that we've been provided, you know, the cost, you know, the cost per dollar of revenue based on tax income, is that, is that adjusted for the farm tax break that the county, that, you know, that agriculture receives in Alexandria County?
As far as the pamphlet that I gave y'all, I would say it is adjusted for, it's not for Alexandria County, but it's adjusted for the counties that are listed. So it hasn't been done here, I'm not trying to be smart, but I'm just saying, we haven't done it here, but it will be adjusted for that, yes. So that's part of the reason for doing this. I do want to say I'm not, our office is not picking on residential or industrial or anything like that because all of the land uses are important and this is for future planning. Will be helpful for just citizens in general to help understand because I know there have been comments about agriculture receiving, you know, big tax breaks and that they should and things like that. I'm just saying. In the, the comments from the comprehensive plan that I've read through, that is something that it will take into account, but it'll also show, it's going to show, yes, what they, what's paid and then what the, what their services are that cost. So things like sewer, water, roads, or if they need internet, things like that. So it's a, should be comprehensive, but then also for industrial, you know, they'll get, have more tax come in, but they're going to have more costs too. So it's really informational piece, it's something for information.
So it would show on a true basis where the weights being pulled, where it's not per dollar?
Should, that's the, that's the intent of it, yes, yes.
Well, and the reason I ask that is, you know, like using the median information, you know, business point three is, you know, 30 cents, you know, cost per, basically per dollar. Agriculture, 37 cents per dollar of, you know, residential, you know, $1.16 per dollar. Or, and make sure I understand, I'm saying this correctly, so with residential, it costs a $1.16, you know, based on the median information on that very first sheet or, you know, for every dollar that county, you know, the average county takes in, in tax revenue, there's a $1.16 spent on services for that, you know, for resident, you know, residential, residential property. Is that, is that?
That's how I understand it also. I do, I'm not going to say that I understand all of it completely, I'll just be honest with you. As far as what this is showing, so this is for, meaning what area and that sort of thing. This is the average, right? So it's not for a specific county, but ours would.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah.
Yes, I believe that's what that is, that is portraying and I believe that's what kind of information we would have back from this type of study.
Okay, and I'm just going, and so the study's going to look at actual revenue, not tax base?
Correct. It looks at revenue and expenditure, so it looks at both and it allocates them based on one of the major categories, whether it's agriculture, business or residential and it puts together.
But it, but it actually will look at revenues, not, not, I mean, to get, because to get a true reflection of, I mean, you have to take into consideration, like say, you know, farmland as well as forestry, you know, as well as, you know, tracks of timber. You know, if you look at the valuation, instead of the actual tax collected, you know, you're talking about a 90% difference roughly. And so I just, I was just going to make, you know, wanted, you know, just wondering which way it was, which way it was, which way it was done so we can understand the findings, you know, if and when.
A couple of points if I can, if I can make. It is actual revenue, so it does look, and it looks not only at property tax, sales tax, it looks at all the revenue sources.
Okay, cool.
We'll have a lot of input if we were to get this grant, working with one of the universities or the Western Piedmont and what the deliverable looks like, so they'll get the information from us. That's a lot of where, if there, if we do get the grant at the maximum 17,000, there's a $5,000, $5100 match that will be in-kind, so it'll be time spent, so it won't actually be real dollars. We're not asking for $5100 of county money. There'll be plenty of time spent from county staff giving the information to the individuals that are working on the study to be able to offset the match, but it'll give us plenty of input as well to be able to know what's going into it and kind of what that's going to look like, but it's actual revenues and actual expenditures. And so the county will have a good significant portion of this that we have to deliver to them.
So in this study, it will show the amount of land, that farmland that's been changed, switched over, sold for business use or home-built use, is all that going to be in there? Because I know one of the biggest issues, I got some information here, but I can't get to it because it's on the agriculture committee, it was just that we just, I just had a meeting a couple of weeks ago and a lot of tremendous information came out and I've sat there and said, whoa, really? Because a lot of the farmland, everything is. Because a lot of the farmland, everything is starting to go away because of residential and, and commercial buildings going up and everything. And our, and our, and our farmland is actually decreasing.
Right.
More, more so than what people realize. I was shocked when I got off, was getting this information. So will this study also contribute to that and give us the information on what's moving and what's not?
All this will show is, the way I understand it, is the ratio of what farmland's costing, what residential's costing, and what the commercial property's costing out of your tax base.
Which I think would be great information to have. I mean, because it's.
So at this time, what's the pleasure of the board?
I'm making a motion we did the study.
I'll second. All in favor, right hand? unanimous, motion carries.
Thank you. You're welcome. I will say what Commissioner Yoder, sorry, is talking about. Would be stuff, information that would be in a farmland protection plan for sure. So that's kind of a little bit more information, more involved, but that is something that we would like to look towards in a few years.
It's very interesting. And if you follow the association, and I don't know whether you send the minutes from the association meeting we had, but I'd be glad to send them to you. And I'll try to do that sometime this week.
Okay.
Very interesting. I was shocked.
Right, thank you.
I'm not a farmer, but I do like chicken nuggets and steak and hamburger and all that stuff. So we want to keep having our farm.
Chicken nuggets a real thing?
Thank you.
Thanks, Pam.
There is that one little part right at the bottom, you know, that you kind of get this one little nugget piece.
Item number nine, we have Christmas in Bethlehem proclamation will be delivered by Vice Chair Leo.
I am just going to read the, this proclamation. Proclamation declaring December 1st through 31st, 2023 as Christmas in Bethlehem. Whereas Alexander County wishes to promote events that increase community spirit and offer opportunities for fellowship during the Christmas season. And whereas the annual Bethlehem Starlighting held on December 2nd, 2023, and that's actually being held tonight because of the weather on Saturday night, excuse me, has been a fixture of the Christmas season for more than 40 years, drawing thousands of citizens to the Bethlehem area. And whereas the annual Christmas drive-through is set for December 8th through 10th, 2023, and will feature 40 scenes ending with a live nativity. And whereas the Bethlehem post office will allow citizens to use the Bethlehem NC stamp to imprint the back of their Christmas cards and other mailings. And whereas these Christmas events promote values and morals which are the binding fiber of the community and are strongly supported by Alexander County area churches, businesses, and citizens. Now therefore be it resolved that the Alexander County Board of Commissioners do hereby declare December 1st through 31st, 2023 as Christmas in Bethlehem adopted this fourth day of December, 2023. And that is to be signed by our Chairman Marty Pennell and attested by Jamie Starnes, clerk to the, clerk to the board.
Do we have a motion from?
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All in favor, right hand? unanimous, motion carries. Thank you for the proclamation. At this time, we're at the part where we elect a new chairman and vice chairman for the 2024 year. So at this time, we'll open up if any commissioner has a nominee they would like to present to the board for chairman.
Move to nominate the chairman, Josh Liu.
Any other nominees? So Commissioner Reese is seconding the motion. All in favor, right hand?
Congratulations.
Motion carries. Commissioner Josh Liu will be your 2024 chairman. At this time, we'll open the floor up for any nominees for vice chairman for the 2024 year.
I nominate Ronnie Reese. Second.
Any other nominees? We've got a first and a second. So all in favor of nominee, right hand? unanimous, motion carries. Mr. Commissioner Ronnie Reese will be your vice chair for the 2024 year. This time, we'll go to board committee appointments, delivered by Clerk Jamie Starnes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have appointments we need to make to the local emergency planning committee to appoint Mike Millsaps, who was Taylorsville PD chief for three years, Terry Church with NC Department of Corrections. Also reappoint John Miller from DOT, Patty Foster Nelson from Greenway, and Pam Baumann from Soil and Water District, also for three years.
Boards heard the nom, the appointments.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the appointments as read.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All in favor, right hand? unanimous, motion carries. At this time, you've had a chance to look over the consent agenda. What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to approve consent agenda as given in our packets.
Second.
All in favor, right hand? unanimous, there's no opposed. Motion carries. At this time, we ask Shane Fox, our county manager, to give his report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. Want to start before I give the update, just a couple of points on the audit that I wanted to make, that I did not have a chance to make earlier. One, your question was asked about how we stack up against other counties. We do have some information and I can provide that to you of some surrounding counties. I think sometimes it's important to look at counties of similar size. Also look at, important to look at counties that are surrounding counties. I will say that Alexander County has a very diversified revenue portfolio. We've shared with each other before. The fact that we do not lean as heavily on our property taxes as other counties and we use sales tax and grant money at a higher percentage than other counties is something that, I can provide to you the detailed data when comparing that to neighbors. Same with our expenditures. We're very common or very similar to our neighbors and our expenditures and the diversification there of how we break it up between public safety, education, et cetera. So again, I can provide that information to you. Do want to provide a couple of dates. Our audit was submitted on November the 6th. In order to be on time in North Carolina, you have to submit it before December the 1st. So it's almost a month ahead of time. At the time in which the audit was submitted, based on the LGC records, it was either the fifth or sixth audit countywide in the state to be submitted. So it was submitted not only early compared to most, it was submitted correctly with no findings, no corrections, and no suggestions. As of last week, it was shared with our finance director at a CE class that she attended, that only 12 counties had submitted their audit at that point. So 12 out of 100 as of last week had submitted their audit. And we were in the top five or six. So just wanted to point those things out. Not only do we have a good report, good financial health that's been reported, also great staff that's very diligent and efficient in the work that they do. And I'm very thankful for them and the work that they put forth. Want to say thank you, starting my update here on all the individuals that worked on the parade. This is my first time working, having a chance to be a part of the parade. This year, we did a large committee approach. Not that that hadn't been in the past, but I was very impressed at the number of department heads and staff that worked for the county and the town that came together to make the parade go off with, I thought, without a hitch yesterday, this past Saturday. Very seamless, very efficient. Lot of folks within the parade, lot of folks attending the parade. So I was very pleased with everyone and want to say thank you for all the work that went into, all the prep work that went into the parade and, and the outcome of that, I thought was, was flawless. Also want to say thank you to a number of departments. We went almost an entire month with a burn ban and that caused a number of calls through our 911 center, our fire department, our forestry, forestry folks, and our Fire Marshal's Office stayed very, very busy for about a month, I would say, give or take. I'm not sure of the number of citations unfortunately we had to give out, but I know we were at one point answering probably at least a dozen calls a day of illegal burning that was going on. Luckily, nothing got out of hand. We were able to contain each one of those reports and those fires that took place. But again, for about a month, we had a tremendous amount increase in volume with all things doing with the fire ban that took place. So thank you to the Fire Marshal's Office, the forestry service, the fire departments, and our 911 center and all of public safety for responding to those calls. Comp plan was mentioned earlier. It is on the website now. I've got a copy of it here. It's about 150-page document that some of you have had a chance to be part of the steering committee. If you not had a chance to go on and take a look at it, it's a great document that I think is very insightful and provides a lot of good information about where the county has been and where the county potentially could go over the next 25 or 30 years. Few updates I want to read here. I was asked to read some changes with our board of elections. This has already been out from a press release, but I'll go ahead and read it so it's official. In the past, the Alexander County Senior Center served as an early voting site and that was done in 2020 and 2022. However, holding early voting disrupts senior senate activities for about 15 days. State of Patrick White, elections director. So we are now moving that to the administrative building. That will be downstairs in the large conference room. So that will, will be a little different than what we've had. So just next door. Early voting does start on February the 15th and runs through March the 2nd. So I'll provide this information so it can go in as part of the record. But we have provided this already as part of a press release. Another update that went out this past week is our Sugarloaf Convenience Center. That center, center is open on Monday, Wednesdays, Fridays, and Saturdays. On Monday, the 11th, the current location will be, that will be the last day of the current location. Both locations, the old and the new, will be closed on Wednesday, the 13th, and the new will open up on December the 15th. So we'll just be down one day for the relocation of the Sugarloaf Convenience Site. So just that one day on the 13th. So the new site, which is located at 3300 Highway 16 North, will be open on Friday, the 15th. So we'll just be down the one day to be able to take care of that transition. Update on a few projects you'll have coming for you before you next month. Hopefully some bid documents as we're starting to put out and prepare for our bid season with some of our larger projects that we've been talking about for a number of months now, some of which may be a year or longer. So we are getting closer. Like we have spoken before, things do take a lot longer nowadays, it seems, to get out, especially with the influx of federal and state money that's out there. So it's taking a little bit longer than perhaps what you are used to. But good news is our number, our, our larger water and sewer projects will be going out to bid this month or next month. And so you'll start seeing some of that activity as it is coming forth. Upcoming dates, we do have our Christmas luncheon for our employees this Friday. And we're thankful for you all for allowing us to attend or allowing us to have that. And I know a number of you will attend as well. That's this Friday. The offices of the county are closed Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday the 25th, 26th, 27th for the Christmas holidays and Monday, the 1st. And our next board meeting will be held on January the 8th. And that is my update for tonight. Be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Sounds good.
Yep, sounds good.
Thanks, sir. At this time, we're going to transition over into our consolidated human services board meeting. So if you're wanting to leave, now would be a good time. And first up, do we have anyone signed up for public comment? Do not. Moving right along, Billy Walker, Health Director, will be giving us a report on public health. Just that microphone, Billy? Sorry.
Good evening. I cannot believe this is the last public health report for 2023. I'll be given the organizational update for, for tonight. So as far as advisory board, we still have two vacancies. We need an ophthalmologist and we need an engineer to serve on our board. As far as staff vacancies, we have an environmental health specialist still and a processing assistant, three. Financial reports, we are applying for a rural health grant and it is due December the 8th. And these funds are for assuring primary and preventive care to meet the health needs of the vulnerable and underserved medically indigent patients and with emphasis on providing primary and preventive medical services to uninsured and medically indigent patients. For those of you who were on the board in 2018 or on our Board of Health, we actually applied for this grant and, and got it. And it's a three-year funded grant and we get $150,000 each year. And so they're doing this again. And so it'll, I think the, the decision will be made in the spring of 2024 and they're going to give, award 33 applicants in the state. Accreditation update. The only thing that has to be done now is that Activity 37.4 and Activity 37.5 is that the, the Board of Health or the Board of County Commissioners and the Consolidated Human Services Director has to review the health director's job description and do an annual performance eval. So that'll be conducted during the closed session. And then committee reports. Our substance use disorder committee has been working monthly and they have set goals and have worked with partners to initiate certain goals to be met. And so the ones with the check marks have been met this year. And so I wanted to, to highlight those. The port team is one that, that to me has been a huge success for this committee. The school education programs, risky behaviors in the high school, catch my breath in the high school and middle schools. And then actually the SUD committee has done presentations in the high school and they have also gone into the churches and done their presentations. The only goal that has not been met by that committee is the drug treatment court programs. And that's, that's going off of another subcommittee. They're, they're actually handling that one. So I think that, that committee is doing a lot of good work in, in the community. Other community and events that we've, we've been working on is the Bridge Community Day event. We also did the drive-through flu clinics every Friday in October. And I think we did 50 flu clinics, 50 flu shots. And then we did school flu clinics for employees and we did 167 employees with that event. And then our health educator, she actually pulled all the PIOs in Alexander County and they have formed the local information team to get, it's called the Lit Team. And they're going to meet quarterly and try to do network and just try to do, pull all their teams together and make sure they're putting out the same messages and the same information. So I thought that was good. Our employees are also doing ICS training for a week in December that we are really looking forward to. And we were all fit tested also. And that's a requirement for preparedness and accreditation. Lastly, renovations, like Shane said, we are still having plans drawn and we will be getting bids for covered entrance. So other than that, that is all I have is updates.
What's the timeframe on the money for that haunting area or the front?
May, May 31st. Well, May 15th, May 15th.
So May 15th, that's the work to be completed or started or what?
Completed, paid out.
Any commission? Thank you. At this time, we'll call on Thomas Mitchell for our DSS report.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'll provide you with an overview for our DSS report. And then I do have some staff here that will talk to you about Medicaid. So we've hired 10 new employees since September. We have 10 vacant full-time positions to fill at this time. We continue to work on our quarterly training and sheltering program. And we were, we're working to build out for our 2024 calendar for that in the upcoming weeks. So for our monthly employment enrichment hour, we had a cookout in September, Halloween decorating, and trick-or-treating for kids for October. And then November was our Thanksgiving and then December is snack day. We did have our first adoption awareness carnival that was held on November the 11th, which was also Veterans Day. I think we had a, a good turnout, 300, I think is what we estimated for that. I think we had a good turnout, three hundred, I think, is what we estimated for that. It was a good time for all. It was kinda chilly and threat of rain, but folks still came out and had some fun, so we were glad to do that. I think I said that. Okay, so here's our new folks that came on board. I think there's a couple of slides here. And right now, we have forty-six children in foster care. Our adoption committee is continuing to meet monthly. We have eight children available to adopt, so for those of you that have been watching that number, that's down from about twenty. And we're, we've, that number will go up some in the next few months. We have some things in court that are still going through. We've had two official adoptions for October, November, and December. We have four children in our eighteen-to-twenty-one links program, so we picked up a youth in that program. And then we will start MAP training for foster parents. That says the fall, but that's incorrect. It will start in January. Hopefully, we'll start that class. And so the unit we want to spotlight tonight is Medicaid. Today is day two of Medicaid expansion, and so I thought it would be good for our Medicaid staff to talk to you guys about the Medicaid unit. And I'll ask Trina Riddle to come up. She's our Program Administrator for Adult Services and Economic Services. I'll let Trina take it from here.
Thomas, let me ask you one question.
Yes.
What's the total number of adoptions that were finalized this year so far?
Well...
Without the three mentioned?
Twenty is what we celebrated in November.
Twenty?
But that goes from June of 2023 up to November.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
I'm a little shorter, sorry. So of course, I'm Trina Riddle. I'm the Economic Services and Adult Services Program Administrator. And the first slide is just a breakdown of our staff in the Medicaid unit. So we have a Family and Children's Unit with Ashley Gilbert as our supervisor, and the Adult Medicaid Unit with Natasha Katari as our supervisor. Each unit has a lead worker who completes second parties of all the caseworkers' cases. They assist with questions of staff, they assist with training, and they fill in when the supervisor is out of the office. The units are broken down a little differently. So in the Family and Children's Unit, the workers are split up between intake and review. So you see, we have two intake workers, and what they do is they accept key process applications all the way through and then pass them on to the review workers who complete yearly reviews. We also have two work-first caseworkers who assist with Medicaid, so they carry about a caseload of three hundred each, so about half of a caseload they carry for Medicaid as well. In the adult unit, we have PLA workers, which means private living individuals who live in their home, and they receive Medicaid. So we have four caseworkers that do those programs. They also, so those workers do intake and review. It's a smaller unit, and it's harder to split it up between intake and review, so they do everything. They take applications, they process them, they also do monthly reviews for the caseloads. We have two special programs workers, they also do intake and reviews as well. The special programs that they evaluate for are long-term care, special assistance, PACE, and CAP, which are individuals who live either in a facility or in their own home, but they have someone that comes in and provides care for them. So we have two caseworkers that do those programs. So I'm gonna talk about Medicaid recipients and the responsibilities of our caseworkers. So we currently have about ten thousand thirty-two individuals in our county receiving Medicaid. That is roughly twenty-seven percent of our population. With Medicaid expansion, we're estimating an additional three thousand individuals, which will increase our percentage to thirty-five percent of our population, which I was very surprised it was that high. Our caseworkers are required to perform reviews on each case's yearly. Some of them are done twice a year. But in Family and Children's, they're averaging about eighty reviews per month, and in Adult Medicaid, they average about forty reviews per month. The difference is, Adult Medicaid cases look at resources, whereas Family and Children's does not. So they're looking at home sites, land, car, life insurance, stocks and bonds, annuities, and pensions. The caseworkers also do required case maintenance, which is transfers from county to county, return mail, daily, weekly, and monthly reports, some which we have to report to the state, and change of circumstance. There are roughly thirty different Medicaid programs which staff must evaluate for, and mistakes in evaluation can result in corrective action and county payback, which luckily, as you heard from Martin and Starnes, we had no paybacks this year, which I'm very proud of that. For these thirty programs, our staff must know all the eligibility rules, and there's online manuals with thousands of pages that they have to know this policy, along with administrative letters, change notices, and terminal message of cases that caseworkers must stay apprised of. I will now turn it over to Kay Dayvault to talk with you about our audits.
Good evening. I'm Kay Dayvault, and I'm the Medicaid Program Evidator. And currently, we have six different audits that check for different aspects of the Medicaid program. The first is the recipient eligibility determination audit. This is an audit that occurs every three years. Cases are pulled for ten consecutive months, and they check for an accuracy rate of ninety-eight point six percent. And we have to meet that rate to avoid a corrective action plan. We also have the single county audit, which is the Martin and Starnes, which is every year. The payment error rate management is performed every three years. This is a federal audit where cases are pulled randomly from the counties across the state. And this audit could result in a statewide corrective action plan depending on the findings. We have the Franklin versus Kinsley, which is a result of a lawsuit against the state, and that one is performed annually. We have the special assistance audit, performed every three years unless there's a corrective action, which then is performed every year until we come off of that corrective action plan. We also have the title four-E audit, which is, again, is performed every three years. And I would say that any errors that are found during any audit are categorized through either internal controls or eligibility errors, and any county paybacks are a result of those eligibility errors. And I'll turn it over to Ashley Gilbert.
Good evening. I'm Ashley Gilbert, the Family and Children's Medicaid Supervisor, and I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about the Medicaid expansion workload. We currently have around three thousand individuals in Alexander County that will be eligible for Medicaid expansion. So this is a huge advantage to many individuals who are unable to find affordable health care and may now potentially be eligible for benefits. We have received feedback from individuals who have stated that they are so grateful for this opportunity. All counties were provided funding to cover additional positions to do the extra work that comes with Medicaid expansion. As of now, we have not utilized those funds that have been provided. Calls about Medicaid expansion are increasing. We are approaching over fifty calls per day. So currently, calls are coming in regarding eligibility requirements for information that they've received from the public. We also are getting calls, that they're getting letters, and they just wanna make sure that what they've received, that they understand correctly what they're gonna be eligible for. So currently, in the two days that we've worked so far in December, we've had a huge increase in applications. So in these two days, we've had forty applications within the two days, and usually, we average forty to seventy apps in a month. It is anticipated that Medicaid expansion will result in thirty percent increased workload, as referenced in the responsibility slide. Our existing staff are in various stages of being fully trained and are already at the maximum of their capabilities. So we're currently trying to navigate and process the new changes to the best of our abilities. State guidelines are still changing, and they're not very clear at this time. This has caused caseworkers a lot of rework. Existing staff are trying to train and adapt to the new policies that have been put into place. Added duties to staff increases the county's liability for caseworker error, which we must pay back one hundred percent if it's discovered in an audit. So I would just like to take this time to thank the Medicaid team for all the hard work, dedication, and time that they put in daily to help the citizens of this county. They are the true heroes that make sure the workload is completed timely while facing many challenges daily, and the supervisory team is very grateful. And I will pass it over to Natasha.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Natasha Katari. I'm the supervisor for Adult Medicaid Special Programs and also non-emergency Medicaid Transportation. I'm gonna talk to you about how we have prepared for the Medicaid expansion. We started December first by using our training room as an overflow lobby in case we had a lot of foot traffic coming in. We have designated one of our windows specifically for Medicaid. The other one will just be for food nutrition, daycare, the other services that we offer. We have a Medicaid staff member on rotation in the lobby that will talk to the people when they come in and make sure that they're not reapplying for benefits or helping them get to where they need to be. We have reached out to social media, news media, to spread the word about the expansion. We've kinda given them an idea of how they can apply and to be prepared for a longer wait than usual. We're promoting e-Pass applications, or online applications, and the people have listened. We've had a large influx of those applications in these last two days. And also, to assist, we've utilized six laptops in a conference room that the clients can use to complete e-Pass applications if they may not have access at home. So I'm gonna turn it back over to Trina to wrap us up.
So I'm gonna talk about our historical information. So most of you know I've been with the county for almost twenty-three years, and all those years have been in Medicaid. So things have definitely changed since I started in two thousand and one. When I began, we only had eight caseworkers in Medicaid, that was both units combined. We added three additional staff in two thousand and fourteen. That is when we rolled into NC FAST, and the state came to every county and said, "Look, you have to hire more people, and this is how many people you need." So we were given three at that time, which is the current staff we have. We have eleven caseworkers. In two thousand and fifteen, our Medicaid population only totaled seven thousand eight hundred and twenty-three, which is only a twenty-two percent increase in eight years. With expansion, our Medicaid population will increase thirty percent in just one year with no additional staff. As you can see from these percentages, expansion will be a challenge for our staff but a huge help to our citizens. Now I wanna talk to you a little bit about retention. As you can imagine, retention is a big deal in a small county when we have all these challenges coming. We have current staff that have already expressed concerns with their workload, and they've questioned if Alexander County is going to provide any relief or help them out. It's common knowledge that we're the only western county that's not utilized our funds to provide additional staff. I feel like our morale is low in most of our units because the demand of the work, and I feel like our staff feels like they're not prepared. The work, Medicaid work is like no other I've ever done. So usually, when I start a new job, a couple of months, I feel like I know what I'm doing, and I can do it well. Medicaid's not like that. You can't learn Medicaid in a month, or two months, or three months. I would say it takes a good six months to feel like you kinda know what you're doing, and then by a year, I feel like you can work independently. We still are gonna second-party a lot of your work because everything we do is a payback if it's an error. So we make sure that we second-party all the work because it is a big liability to the county. Like I said, it takes about six months to train someone, and then an additional twelve to sixteen months for them to feel confident and to work independently. There's a fierce competition among counties to recruit caseworkers that have experience in these programs, and they're commanding much higher salaries than have traditionally been paid. Trained staff is a huge asset, especially in a small county, because we bring them in, we train them. A lot of times, they go to other counties to make more money, and a lot of times, they have a smaller caseload, because when you don't have a lot of staff, your caseloads are higher. The Family and Children's caseload right now is a little over nine hundred per worker, and the Adult Medicaid is about four hundred and fifty per worker. So it's a lot of stress for these workers. I would also like to add that if we lose any caseworkers during expansion, it's gonna cause a huge burden to our remaining staff, and it could potentially increase the risk of more turnover, which could also increase our risk of having more paybacks because you have untrained workers trying to do this work. We did get some news from the state. They've approved some waivers that are gonna make some certain Medicaid recipients eligible for an additional year. It's mostly the children. They're gonna roll those cases and let them continue to receive. They're doing this so that counties can onboard new staff, train new staff, and so that we can be adequately prepared for the Medicaid expansion. I'm hoping we'll be able to take advantage of these waivers and hire additional staff. I'd like to get them trained so that in 2024, when we have all these new reviews to do, I have someone to do them. I'd like to also take this opportunity to thank our staff. They do a great job in Medicaid. The jobs are difficult. There are a lot of times I feel underappreciated, but I really do appreciate all their work that the workers do and the staff for the citizens of our county. And if you have any questions, we'll be happy to try to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that the end of the DSS report? At this time, we'll get Kristy Hunt for Senior Senator Report.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Kristy, hang on a minute.
Okay. Um, just, just one question. In the information we were provided pertaining to number of people served by DSS and, you know, food nutrition, Adult Medicaid, all that, you know, all the different, all the different services, the information we got is through the end of October. Why do we not have information under Child Protective Services for September or October, for foster care for September or October, for adoption services for September or October?
On the statistical report?
Yes.
I'll check into that, and then I'll email you. I'll send it through Shane. I'll double-check that. Let me write that down. So you're talking adoption and CBS numbers?
It's pretty evident what's, I mean, it's not, you know, it's pretty evident what, what didn't get, what information...
Right.
You know, didn't get put into the spreadsheet.
Okay.
And, and this is, and this is another question, just because you, I mean, I think you know, these things are pretty close to my heart. I'm a little, just being real straight, I'm a little disappointed, you know, under foster homes, we have zero from January, excuse me. We do have the information for new applications completed through the end of October, but from January through the end of October, we only have two new applications to be foster We have a total of two new licenses issued in ten months. What's the problem?
Well, we had the one, our last MAP class, just to be frank, we had some issues with fingerprinting. There's, we had to be recertified for CRI so that our, the CRI system, so our fingerprints would go through, and so there was a large time delay in getting those foster parents. We had another issue with a foster parent that wasn't able to get licensed. So we're hoping that we've learned some lessons through that first group that we can improve in January. So I'm hoping, I'll check with Miles when I get back, but I think that we have at least three that he has trained through MAP individually in their home.
Well, we, I'm very familiar and...
So those licenses should be...
I'm very familiar and know one, one family or couple that has, you know, is basically just waiting on, and has been waiting, and has even contacted DSS several times saying, "We've done everything. Hello?"
Right. Out of the first group I'm speaking about?
I don't know, but I just know that, I know they have, they have done everything that, that is required, you know, from the foster parents' perspective, which I'll let you guys know is quite a lengthy list, as well as, you know, it's not, it's not a, you've gotta be serious to go through with it.
Absolutely.
And I understand that every, everybody that goes through MAP classes does not end up being, you know, does not end up going through with it, or there's a reason that they don't, you know, because I remember when I, when we went through MAP classes for the second time in Alexander County, I don't remember how many, you know, families or couples or, you know, folks were in there, but I wanna say it was at least eight or ten, and I think only three or four of us actually, but I'm really kinda bum-puzzled as to why we don't even have the information. And also feel like the information could be a little better.
Right. And the, there's another, you know, void in our county, too, with not having therapeutic foster homes. And as, as you recall, we have been communicating with VIA for that, about that for at least six to eight months, and there, there is some... And there is some traction on that. We are scheduling some joint recruitment events with Pinnacle, who's going to be the provider for training therapeutic foster parents. And so hopefully, we'll have some news to report about that soon as well. But I've got the notes here that you made, and I'll definitely go back and see if we can improve those reports for you.
Okay, thanks.
At this time, Kristy, step forward and deliver the senior center report, please.
Okay. Before I start with the senior center, I do have to tell you I thoroughly enjoyed the parade myself. My family and I went to one of my seniors' houses. She allowed us to sit on her porch with her until the parade began, and that was much appreciated, considering I had my four-year-old grandson with me. And it was his first time to get to see the parade. So we enjoyed, you know, showing him to make sure we say Merry Christmas really loudly, so we... People would throw us more candy, you know? So that was really fun. Okay. Senior Center, of course, we're doing great. Bingo and birthday lunches still just prevailed wonderfully. We opened it up to take signups on Friday. We were full by Friday at 2:00. So it's, you know, we're just expanding so much. We kind of are outgrowing our space. But we're making do, and we're doing great. So very happy there. We do have a new yoga instructor, so we're very happy to offer yoga again. Our birthday lunches, we have been having some great presentations. Kaitlin Gansrow from the Health Department has been presenting and doing like health education classes for fall prevention, general healthy living. Mary Mitchell put on a wonderful caregiver's report last month for our November one. She is from the Western Piedmont Council of Governments. We've had elder law seminars that people are really enjoying, too, because it teaches them how to protect their assets. You know, there's different things going on as we get older, and a lot of people don't understand things that they have to do, steps that they have to take in order to protect these assets. And I'm not an attorney. So I feel very privileged that we will have one that comes out and kind of gives advice on this kind of stuff. You know, power of attorneys, healthcare power of attorneys, things like that. She talks about all of it, so it's wonderful. Day trips. I have a lovely slide. Our next slide is going to be some pictures of our day trips this year. I think our seniors would really love to go every day, but, you know, we just can't do that every day. But it was fun. I got to go to the zoo with them, and we just had a ball. So, very tired, but it was good. Our newsletter has been doing wonderful. We've actually started having local businesses and doctors' offices and churches. They are sending people to the senior center to pick up printed copies of our newsletter. So I am very happy about that. We actually print... We have 600 printed for free. And if they want more, of course, we just print them ourself. We email out 1,000 emails with the newsletter, and then that kind of gets shared to other people. Like, we'll send it to one person, and they're like, "Oh, yeah, I sent the..." You know, emailed that one on to this other person, so... And then we always publish our calendar in the tailor's full times. Okay, the next slide, that's just some pictures. Aren't they fun? Look at that. They had a ball. They love it. It's amazing. I love to see their faces light up and just to see how much fun they have on these trips. So you see our zoo there. That was very fun. And the pictures, they ride the scooters, and we go around and look at all the animals. It took a little longer than what we had expected that day, but we still had fun. Okay. And the next one, we had our health fair. Had a great turnout. We had 154 people. We're breaking records here with everything that we're doing, so I'm very happy to get that information out there. Our Spooktacular was amazing. We had... We were determined to not have senior volunteers this year to help with our games and the serving and everything else. So we had local businesses would actually come to help us, like A.J. Curly came from Pace at Home. Julie came from Catawba Hospice. And so it was just... It was really a great turnout. My two daughters helped, so it was very good. So I looked. We had 130 people that came to that party. Our last Halloween party was in 2018. We had 14 people come. So I think this is a really good way of showing that they're ready to party, and they just enjoy it. So very happy about that. Diamond Tours, we're offering three trips next year. Not sure if all of them will make or not, but we have already had... I think we've already had about 20 people to sign up for our Mount Rushmore trip. So they're, again, they're ready to go and party and have a lot of good times. And I'm hoping the Arc Encounter fills up. I'd kind of like to go on that one myself. Christmas Craft Fair, we had this past Saturday. And, you know, the weather was a little discouraging some, but it was still good. We had about 49 people come, so it was still good. You know, they come out and shopped a little bit, and our vendors were very pleased to be there, and they enjoyed it, so it's going well. Senior Share Closet, we're going to try something a little bit different this year. Every year, the seniors usually get together, and we do some type of angel tree. Whether it's... We've done foster kids before. We've done the nursing homes before. We've done the pregnancy center. I know some of our, you know, quilters have made quilts for the Sheriff's Department. So every year, we've done the boys' home. We've just done a lot of them. Well, this year, we've decided to help our seniors. You know, we have a lot of seniors that's there, and some of them have needs that we really just don't think about. You know, social security checks have not went up as much as our economy has grown. And so I think they're kind of falling short in some areas. And so we're going to do this as discreetly as we can. If they have a need, they can share it with a staff member. We'll put what need they have on the tree, and then we'll make sure that it gets filled. And it can be a need, or it can be a want. And I said, "Some of our seniors may just want a new dress to wear to church, but they have to buy their medicine." So we want to make sure that they have that if they need that. We're trying to stock it with, like, normal, basic, everyday needs: shampoo, deodorant, adult diapers. Anything that we can use, we are asking for, and we've already had a lot of good turnout. Town and Country Pharmacy have been great. They always... All of our pharmacies have always been very big supporters of Town and Country. They call us all the time. "Do you need anything? What can I bring you?" And I never say no, you know? I'm always, "Yeah, I'll take whatever you can give me." Okay. Medicare open enrollment is currently going on. And it's... This is always a challenge for us, but it's kind of fun. It's very exhilarating, and it just gives us something... It just gives us a challenge to ourselves that we can do. We schedule people every... We have like half-hour appointments, and so there's three of us working on this now. But there was one day that I saw 23 people before lunch. So it's been busy, and it's been great. I'm very happy to help these people. I go to Fresenius Dialysis Unit, because we do disability enrollments, too. And so it's been a very good year. This is the first year since COVID that I've got to go on the floor and actually talk to the people, what time they're getting their treatments. And I just love that, because, you know, you talk to one person, and you're going in like... You know, there was one day when I was only scheduled to meet with three people, and I think I ended up seeing about 30. So it was wonderful. You just kind of go from chair to chair, and they're like, "Oh, hey, what are you talking about? Can I get that? Can I do that? Sure," you know? So I was very happy with that. Extra help program, a lot of people don't understand this. This is a subsidy through Social Security. The income limits are much higher than what they would be with normal Medicaid. Of course, now, when we do an extra help application, if it pertains to the amount of money that they receive, it does go to social services. It will just automatically roll on over to social services. But it starts with Social Security. So as you can see, the income limits for an individual is $1,823. A lot of our county make under that in Social Security. So if, you know, my suggestion, if you think you're anywhere close to that, come see us, because the worst thing they can do is say no, you know? We can always apply, and we can hope for the best. I had one lady that was enrolled. We had done her extra help application. It's probably been a little over a month ago. And I logged into her account today, and she qualifies for full extra help now. And whereas she was paying like close to $500 a month for her Eliquis, now she'll be paying $11.20. So that makes a very big difference. And, you know, Eliquis, I don't know if y'all know what that is, but it's a heart medication, and it is very good, but it is very expensive. And so to be able to help them to afford their medicine really makes you feel good, you know? Because you need that. You have to have that. Okay, our next slide. Now, URALS is not updated as much as what mine is. I can't update my numbers until the first of the month, and by that point, I've already turned in my report. So there, where it says January through October, we've had the savings of $542,890. By the end of November, that increased to $860,786. And we've had a total of 1,021 contacts so far. So I'm very proud of those numbers. We are inching back up there. Some years are better than others on that. It just depends. You know, we can't force people to come in. We hope that they will. And a lot of it is word of mouth. We help one person, they go tell their neighbors, and they come in, and we're happy to help them, you know? So it's great. I'm very proud of those numbers, and hopefully, they'll keep increasing. We just have till Thursday. But then, of course, January 1st starts Medicare Advantage de-enrollment period. So we'll have some more. It goes all year round. Okay, our participation. We're holding steady. We're doing really good. My November numbers are at 1904, which is not up there yet, so it's still looking good on that. Very happy our seniors are just wanting to come out and participate. We're still... I mean, if you look, we're still above average on that. The only month that gets us there is when we did have the voting in the building. Okay, the next slide, I kind of stole from Tina Miller when she come out and done our Council on Aging meeting. I think I give you all copies of the packets. They look like this. And that's a big packet, and I'm not going to go all the way through that. But the numbers are in there, and this just talks about how North Carolina's population is aging. So if you look at this, we're going to have a 39% increase in people over 60. But then, if you turn over there to the Alexander one, it's 15% for 60 and up. I love the 85-plus, 84% increase. To me, that is just amazing. We are growing older, and we are living longer, and so we just get to, you know, have more fun in those years. So if you need more information about that, just let me know. And is there any questions?
Any commissioners?
No.
They'll have a good time.
We do. We really do. It's amazing. I love seeing their faces, I do. And I love whenever I get those phone calls. I have a gentleman that will call me, usually on Fridays after we close, and he leaves a message for me as something he's enjoyed that week, so that when I come in on Monday morning, I get to hear it, and it just perks up my whole week. So I love it.
Thank you, Kristy.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do for them.
Thanks.
At this time, we're going to go into closed session. NCGS 143, 318, 114, 5 and 6, for the purpose of economic development, contractual, and personnel, only to come back in to adjourn. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Second.
All in favor, Rahim? And then this motion carries. Thank you all.